Everybody, this is the select board meeting for July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. It is six P M. In the land use hearing room. This is a hybrid meeting and is being recorded except for any executive session. If anyone else is recording, please advise Russ Anderson for the record. Uh, we will call the meeting to order with attendance. Nicole Parker cannot be with us today. Diane Gale.
Doug Moblin, Ross Anderson.
Eglene Sognani.
And then if Ms. Johnson would lead us in pledge of allegiance.
You're being appreciated.
I pray your goodness. The United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, and the individual, the religion, the justice, the law.
Thank you. Okay, before we begin, we would like to have a moment of silence for Ethel and Jacobowski. She was a longtime dedicated poll worker who passed away earlier this month after a long life of ninety-two years. Thank you. And then if there's anyone who has a public comment in the room, could you raise your hand? Over here first, Mr. Diddy. Okay, over here, your name and address, please.
Stephanie Price. My name is, is okay if I stand. My name is Stephanie Price and I live at three fifty-three North Loomis Street and I'm speaking on behalf of a group of concerned residents recent regarding recent activities at the property located at three fifty-one North Loomis Street, which was purchased by Berry Construction Group on June twelfth, twenty twenty twenty-four. It appears that prior to this purchase, Berry Construction may have increased the town regarding the future use of the property. In response, a letter was issued by the former building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Kyle Scott dated February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. We believe this letter contains several inaccuracies that warrant further review. Our primary concern centers on whether the prior commercial use of this building should have been considered active or dormant. The previous occupant, Calak Brothers Incorporated, ceased operations prior to October twenty twenty-one. Based on our observations, no commercial activity has occurred on the site for well over a year. Possibly as long as three years. Under the bylaw in effect at the time of Mr. Scott's letter, a commercial use that had ceased for one year was considered dormant. While the zoning bylaw was updated in May of twenty twenty-four, it allowed up to three years of dormancy. We believe the prior use still may not meet the defined definition of active under the new standard. To better understand how Mr. Scott arrived at his determination, we respectfully request information regarding the evidence or documentation that was reviewed in support of his February twenty-sixth letter. Was a formal process followed? What records or indicators were used to establish continued commercial activity? This question has already been directed to Mr. Alvin Allen in the planning department and we await a detailed response. We also feel compelled to share a troubling account. A member of our group contacted Mr. Scott directly before his departure from the town. During that call, Mr. Scott reportedly made dismissive and inappropriate remarks suggesting the caller should have looked around more before buying your house and making a disparaging comment about the quality of the neighborhood. While we understand this was an informal conversation, such comments are highly unprofessional, raise concerns about impartiality and reflect poorly on the decision-making process behind the letter in question. Setting aside the issue of dormancy, there are well-established legal limitations on the continuation of non-conforming uses. These typically include maintaining the same footprint and continuing a use similar in nature and scale to what was previously allowed. In the last years of Calak Brothers operating at this site, their activities were limited to manufacturing concrete tanks inside the building. Outdoor activity was minimal, limited to occasional truck movement and conducted only during normal weekday business hours. In contrast, Berry Construction's use of property represents a clear and significant intensification and a change in use. Operation of vibratory topsoil screeners and rock sorters outside the original building footprint, regular operation of heavy machinery including excavators and dump trucks, prolonged engine and backup alarm noise, large volumes of filled, dumped and stored onsite, use of the site during evenings including operations as late as eleven P M. These industrial-level activities were not part of the historical use. We ask the board to determine whether a special permit is now required for topsoil screening and similar operations and whether this intensification of use invalidates any claim of grandfathered status based on section one eighty-five two eight, which clearly outlines the expectations of non-conforming continued use. Additionally, these activities now occur within a hundred and fifty feet of residential homes and have created sustained disruptive noise levels. We respectfully request the board to review the applicable state and local noise standards and help us understand the following. What are the decibel limits for noise near residential property lines? Is enforcement dependent on police reports? Should residents begin filing formal complaints? At this point, we believe it is reasonable to question whether the continued use of this property by Berry Construction qualifies for non-conforming zoning protection or whether the intensity and the nature of the activity now requires a special permit. The business operations today exceed those of Calak Brothers in terms of footprint, equipment, noise and hours of operation that may not be permitted under current zoning. We respectfully request the board take the following steps. Verify the duration of dormancy and determine whether the site was inactive for over one year, per the standard in place when Mr. Scott's letter was issued. Review and make public the materials and procedures used by the former zoning officer in making his determination. Assess the current and intended future use under non-conforming parameters and determine whether a special permit is now required. Investigate noise compliance to state and town regulations, including enforcement procedures for the Department of Environmental Protection, Noise Control Regulation three-ten C M R seven dot ten, and provide guidance in documenting potential violations. We urge the board to consider that we are longstanding residents who chose to live here with intention. Many of us lived alongside Calak Brothers Construction during both its busiest years and its eventual closure. We are not uninformed bystanders. We are deeply invested in preserving the character and livability of our neighborhood. Unfortunately, based on recent activity and interactions, Berry Construction Group has made no effort to engage with neighbors or act as a constructive presence in our community. Anne has indicated that he plans on dramatically increasing the activity and noise at the site, no regard to the impact on our neighborhood. We hope the board will take our concerns seriously and ensure the use of this property complies fully with town regulations, both past and present. Thank you for your attention and your service to this town. Sincerely, Ronald Puccini, three sixty-six North Loomis Street, fifty-one-year resident, Sharon Antico, three sixty-three North Loomis Street, fifty-year resident, Mike and Marina Nikat, three forty-nine North Loomis Street, twenty-five-year resident, Seth and Beth Lawley, three fifty-two North Loomis Street, nine-year resident, Dennis and Paula Palmer, three forty-two North Loomis Street, eight-year resident, Phil and Stephanie Price, three fifty-three North Loomis Street, five-year resident, Kirsten Knightley, three fifty-five North Loomis Street, four-year resident landlord, Eli Silverman, three fifty-eight North Loomis Street, two-year resident, Salima Wing, three forty-five North Loomis Street, new resident. And we have some topics for you.
Thank you.
That was a question.
I can't write that.
Yeah, no need to.
Appreciate it. Anybody else in your group?
Well, good fact.
That sums it up for us.
Okay, very well, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Diddy, Mr. Diddy was first.
Roger Patel, though, Thorfield Street. Uh, I own property in the same area. It's a problem going on. I've lived there for sixty-five years. And I got officials here of them bringing in chemicals to stuff that's been left on the property. That's where they've been done with it. And they have it. So that, and my name isn't added to that list, but it is now.
Thank you, sir. Okay, and then, Mr. Diddy, want to try it again?
Sure.
I am joined by Nathan Leo Grove, resident of Southwick and currently on the finance committee. Diane Gale, chairman of the select board. As chair, responsibility for how this board conducts itself and how those under its oversight behave ultimately falls under your roof. I'm here tonight to raise an issue that's not just troubling on a personal level, but deeply concerning in terms of ethics, professionalism, and the culture we're creating in this building. It has come to my attention that select board member Russ Anderson has been reviewing security footage of me, watching to see what paperwork I'm carrying, who I'm meeting with, and taking notes of my movements. I also know Nicole Parker is doing the same activity. Let me be clear. I understand surveillance cameras in a public building serve as a safety purpose. But this isn't about safety. This feels targeted, it feels personal, and it crosses a serious line. This kind of behavior does not fall under the authority of the select board and is not appropriate for any town employee to use surveillance to track or monitor other officials. So I have to ask, why is this happening? Who else are you guys watching? Is this really the kind of culture we're going to tolerate in Southwick? Looking back at, looking back on election day, when Mr. Anderson was elected, I was, I recall that he was president at town hall for several hours then. As a candidate, you're required to stay at least a hundred and fifty feet away from the polling location, except to cash your own vote. Yet he remained on site for hours. Were surveillance being used that day to observe who was coming in and out? Were there efforts to meet and greet specific voters? That's a fair question now, given what I've learned. This goes to the heart of integrity and trust and how we govern. I'm asking that access to the police surveillance system be removed from town hall, officials, town hall officials in place entirely under the oversight of the Southwood Police Department, where a chain of command, policy, and professional accountability are clearly defined. To those involved, I say this pointedly. I see you, and I believe the residents of Southwood deserve to know who's watching and buying. There needs to be a public investigation into who has been accessing this footage and for what reasons. The town deserves better than what's happening now, and the people deserve transparency, not surveillance. This is just another example of government overreach. That's no place in our small-town government. I'm asking for a formal response from this board publicly and on record about who has access to the surveillance system, how is it being used, and what policies are in place to prevent abuse. The residents of Southwood deserve answers. Thank you.
Do you have a copy of that that we could have?
No, I could email it to you.
Would you please? Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Public comment? Anybody online? Okay. And we shall move on. I just want to say to this large group that came in on this property, um, this will go to the C A O. To investigate and move forward and.
The C A O.
Is it C A O?
What is the C A O?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Chief Administrative Officer Nicole Parker, who is not here tonight um, to address it and, um, I imagine respond to Ms. Price initially, but of course, will take some time to pull it together. And, and Alvin Allen is already on it, I'm sure. If, if you said you've already addressed it with him, so you're welcome to.
Have you set a timeline on that?
That, no idea. Can't commit to that. Can't commit to that. I don't know if Alvin has even begun the research on it. I don't know when you asked for that information from him, so.
He responded to me and told me that he couldn't find the information, you know, like the filing system might not be, you know, in the best shape and like he couldn't find anything. He did say that he asked around and he told me that he wasn't like in an authority to, you know, overstep Mr. Scott so that, you know, next steps would be to either consult a lawyer or come to meet with you guys.
And, and Nicole will be able to sift through that.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you like. Or not.
Or not.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I understand.
Good to see you.
All right. Then we have a public hearing. Want to conduct, and I will read the notice for the public hearing for Monday, July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. You can come up if you'd like. This is a hybrid meeting via Zoom with, with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Six oh five P M. Southwick Fiscal Year twenty-two and twenty-three C D B G Performance Hearing and Proposed Budget and Program Amendment. Southwick Select Board will conduct a public hearing on Monday, July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, starting at six oh five P M. The hearing will be conducted in hybrid format. Interested parties may attend in person at South of Town Hall or join via the Zoom link or phone number provided. The hearing will review the fiscal twenty-two and fiscal twenty-three Southwick Community Development Block Grants awarded to the town. Grant projects include phase-two construction on Bungalow Street and funding for our community food pantry. Additionally, a proposed program and budget amendment for this grant award will be presented. The proposed amendment will utilize up to one hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars in uncommitted and available funds from the Bungalow Street project to create a line item for construction on North Lake Ave. The Bungalow Street project has met its grant program goal. Construction has been completed and this project is now closed. Additional community needs that can be, that can be addressed through the block grant program will also be discussed. All residents with questions or comments will have an opportunity to be heard. The Southwick Town Hall is handicapped accessible. I don't believe we've received any written comments. Nothing has shown up. Okay, uh, we need motion to open the hearing, please.
Don't move. Second.
Rock, elbow, Dan Gale, I.
Doug Moblin, yes. Ross Anderson, yes.
And.
Thank you. We try to make those ads jazzy.
Some of you stacked the room. It's all right.
We love the thing the words doesn't excite about block and everyone else, but we.
It's exciting as pre-existing non-conforming use.
You know, it's supposed, I, I, I thought you said it's supposed second, but.
For someone who works at a planning agency, that kind of, um, yeah, I just, my mind just goes to spring.
It's, it's always intriguing because there's so much court case and.
No, absolutely. Well, we're lucky to have a lot of people like you who are in that streak. So we are here to talk about, uh, the F Y twenty-two, twenty-three block grant. This is part of the requirements. We love coming to see you, and this is part of the requirements of the grant funding that we come and we give an update uh, as to the progress of the grant. And, um, it was kind of difficult this year to kind of figure out the timing of the progress because we had two things that were happening with such different timelines. Um, so Bungalow Street is done. Uh, we had the good fortune of getting, uh, grant funding in two fiscal grant years, uh, back to back. So instead of doing a piece over the road, then coming back and doing another piece, we were able to do the whole thing at once. Um, and that finished up this spring with the final paving, and that project is now completed. Uh, the funding also supports the, uh, our community food pantry. And that project is very much still underway. The, the twenty-two, twenty-three grant was a, a different sort of year because it was two federal fiscal years combined together to kind of get us back in line after COVID got us all offline. Um, so the food pantry funding is a two-year grant, so they're just about halfway through, um, their two years of funding, so through their first year. Uh, if you got the handout, yes, if you got the handout, if you want to hand out adoring audience or anyone online, let us know. Um, or there's some highlights, but I don't know.
Is that a student for the end pick?
Yes.
He'd like to come up and.
You can sit in the front row.
He'd like, very educational piece up there.
I don't know if he can hear us all back though.
Should I start again?
No, please, please don't.
I will.
Also, before, while we're in this little segue, I just have my little handy dandy.
Of course.
I've got to have a sign in.
Very official as you can see.
And he said to me, should I pass it around now before the meetings? I'm like, no, 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 wait. That was the wrong. I feel like I have to, I, I address it publicly. That was the, the wrong answer. Uh, do people have questions? Um, saying. No?
The, um, numbers that you have on the food pantry, is that from July first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth?
Yes, it is. Yep. So these are through June thirtieth and.
Ninety-six thousand pounds of food.
Yeah, so I, I want to, I want to say too, I, I really, it was hard to squish it into this little box because they do so much through the food pantry. Um, and it's also, this is also, um, specific to Southwick. Not the food, that, that's, that's for everyone, but the, 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 the block grant only serves Southwick. So when we're putting together our stats for the state, they see Southwick numbers. They don't see all the rest. Um, and I think also the impact of the food pantry can't really be, um, limited to just the numbers. There's, there's much more that happens through the, the food pantry as far as connections uh, to other people, to other services. Um, and even though we have to, um, we have to report on numbers, there's, there's more to it than just the numbers, but the numbers are, are astounding. Just to think of, you know, in a single year, a hun, over almost two hundred thousand pounds of food. Um, and that's two hundred thousand pounds of food that came from somewhere else, came to the pantry and then went back out into the community. So that's anyone who does the grocery shopping for their family, that's a no. It's a lot. It's a lot. Uh, so it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of moving. Um, they have a very dedicated volunteer, uh, group in addition to their very dedicated board and their very dedicated staff. And every month I get, um, I get reports that come in that, of course, talk about the numbers, but talk about other things like the, the snack bags for kids or the number of turkeys that go out at Thanksgiving. And, and I think it's, it's important to, to highlight that the need is all year rounds. And then people like to donate in Thanksgiving time and at Christmas time, but the, the need is all year round. And it continues to grow. The need continues to grow. The number of people that come through continue to grow. Um, and Sally and Meg do a very wonderful job at keeping track of all those people and the increases and, and sending all the information. It's truly, it's truly remarkable.
And I think Bungalow Street was one case where delay allowed the two periods to line up and get it done.
Yes.
Absolutely. And doing that again with the other projects.
Talking about the other things, how long can we push it?
So it, it's funny because I, when, when I was here, I think the first time I met you, we were, we were doing something similar for the twenty-twenty-one grant. And I was like, you know, we're running a little behind, but it's going to be worth it. Trust me, it's going to be worth it because we're going to be able to put the two together. And, and I think it's, it's always hard to say, trust me, it's going to be good at the beginning. But when it's all done, you can say, see? So, yes, and I'm, I'm hoping, I, I think I can't promise that we'll ever be that lucky again where it all, all just falls into place as far as time and, and money, but, um, sure going to try. And that brings me, or do I need to formally stop one before I start the next?
No, any other questions so far? All right.
I have to say.
Yeah.
So at church, we tend to hand out food as well. In a big insurance, where you're always seeing as families who are embarrassed to actually ask, is there like an online platform where you could actually put in a request in private? So that way it's not disposed to the public eye where they're judged.
Hi, at our food pantry? Yes, there is. Yes, there is.
And I think there, there's a certain amount of record keeping that has to happen, um, because of where the food comes from. Um, but I certainly know that there, there are multiple, there are multiple avenues. Um, I know in addition to coming to the pantry during open hours, I know there's also a delivery system. Um, so there, there are other, there are other.
And they, they schedule, they schedule the pickup. So only like two or three people are coming in at any one time. So it's kind of private. They get to go through and shop, do what they have to do privately. They cycle them through. That way it's really a good system.
That's good, you know?
I am, I am available for questions if anybody has any. Uh, this is Sarah, the director.
Thought she was there.
Oh, sorry, that's.
I'm here. I'm here. Unfortunately, I had to come home and do something, but yes, I am here. And now such a question is, everything is kept very private. Um, the only people that really know any information on any of our clients is myself and my partner in crime, Meg. Um, we are, in fact, we're overboard about as far as privacy and things, there's things that go on all the time. We have people coming at different times because of different needs. It's all kept very, very private and, uh, we actually pride ourselves on that. Um, we don't share information with anybody, only statistics. That's all we share. We're not going to share anything else. So it's very private.
I don't, like I said, I get the, I get the numbers every month, but I couldn't, couldn't tell you one of the clients if I wanted to. I don't know what they are.
Okay, so go ahead.
All right. So the segue is, uh, because we had the good fortune of bidding and, and constructing both phases of Bungalow Street together, when we originally thought they were going to be separate, we saved a lot of money. Um, so we had put in the newspaper that we had up to a hundred and ninety thousand. I wasn't sure what the final bill was going to be. Um, now we know what the final bill is and we have one hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eleven cents. Thank you, Evan, for, for doing the double check on that number. Uh, down to the eleven cents. Um, and we have a unique opportunity here to use that money somewhere else. Um, and I did, when, when Bungalow Street was wrapping up, we had met with John and Randy DPW out on site and, and said, we're likely going to have some extra money here. Where does it make sense to invest it? Um, to put more into the North Lake project, which we're, we're starting up now through the F Y twenty-four grant. Um, or does it make sense to start designing another place or, or put it somewhere else? And the thought at the time, which I assume, I won't assume anything. I know John's on. Um, the, the thought at the time was it makes sense to put it into the North Lake project. We have plans ready to go. We have a bid that's almost ready to go. Once we know how much money we have. Yeah. Um, and it, it made, made sense to, to keep it in that neighborhood and keep building on the work that was happening in that area of town. So.
And North Lake was going to be in two steps as well, we thought.
Best case scenario, yes. Um, it could be three. Um, I, I think if we. Yes, we don't ever know till we know. Um, and I'll tell you right now that the, we're finding the bidding climate to be somewhat unusual, unpredictable.
I mean, I would say it's unusually, it's, 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 I would say, I would say it's not sporadic. It's more of, I would say so far the bids we put out have been unexpectedly, in, unexpectedly high in terms of the number of bids we've gotten for projects. There definitely seems to be a lot of demand for construction projects of regardless of the scope or size. Um, we recently had a bid, um, for about, it was a seven hundred thousand dollar water drainage project or I should say road and drainage project. No water involved, no sewer involved. And we had, it was about seven hundred thousand dollars, about fourteen bidders were in for that project. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of demand, I think, for these types of projects. So in terms of how comfortable we feel about when we put out a bid, I think we're definitely extremely eager now to get something like this out to bid because of that demand that we see. Um, so that makes it all the more important now that we've had additional funds to add to it, how having a potential for moving these to the infrastructure project to expand that scope, I think it makes it, like Erica was mentioning, a more effective and just all-encompassing project. So.
And hopefully it can happen in few phases. Um, we also, um, as we get further along in this grant, we're also going to take a look at our finances, P V P C finances. Um, we have a cut of the money to manage, manage these projects. We're going to be taking a look at the twenty-two, twenty-three and the twenty-two and the twenty-four to see if there's additional funds. When we run our projections, will we have money left over that makes sense to put into the grant at that time? Um, because we're trying to, trying to get the, these things done quickly and well. And out of the, the fewer, the fewer times you stop and start, the further your mo, further your money goes. So we're always trying to find a, find a way to do them um, in the smallest number of grants. Um, in the smallest number of grants possible. And there's more fun facts about that in here too, another question, a little background information, which I'm not gonna read, because I, I'm not as.
How many?
Talented a reader as as uh the group that came before.
Which allegiance is very good, I thought.
Absolutely. You know, the CDBG. It's such an advantageous program for a community like ours where we have. Roads that desperately need work that we can't work on, and this gives us an avenue to get that work done. And, you know, I know. The next three or four, you know, four, five, eight, ten years out, we know what those are going to be, right? Because we have them, right? Absolutely, right? And we'll be, we'll be at it for a long time.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, but you can see the improvement, you know, on Bungalow and the other ones that have been done there and what a benefit those are to the community and. And the people who live there, because they're, you know, they're, they're unimproved ways or unacceptable ways and they're never gonna get accepted.
Sure.
Um, and also, you know, it can't go without saying the support for the food pantry.
Yeah.
I know Sally's on, but I was gonna say this anyway, those guys punch way above their weight, right, for.
Absolutely.
You know, for what they deliver and the support they get from the community and the support they give back to the community is. CDBG and that funding mechanism really make that whole thing, help make that thing work. I'm sure they would find a way to do it without it, but I don't think we ever want to envision a way of not having to do that, right, so. Um. You know, I can't say, and the demand for that unfortunately continues to increase. That was surprised by that. Damage as well.
And twenty percent increase in activity.
And I think we're gonna continue to see that as well, um, as there's, there's some pretty drastic changes happening at the federal level, which is. Gonna make uh the need for food pantries even greater. And if they weren't funded for a second year, I'd be sitting here talking to you about the benefits of of moving money to the food pantry.
I was gonna ask that actually, because this was on a road project, does it have to be committed to? Amended to another road project?
It doesn't, it doesn't. Um, so it needs to be committed to another project that's. CDBG eligible, so it could be a road, it could be the pantry, it could be a. A planning study, it could be um, a number of other things that are eligible, CDBG.
Elevator project.
An elevator project, well, we already, we already got that.
Talk about those.
No, we forgot that one, that's the good thing, can't find anybody to do it, right?
But well, we actually do, we actually do have some. So then we have, we have Worcester Elevator Company, that's actually, we signed on for that work, so that's part of the FY twenty four award that we got. Um, they got those to proceed and that should be happening, last time I talked to them sometime in. Early mid-August, they'll be coming out here and actually working on the elevator, so.
We signed those.
That's next, right?
Yeah. I said early mid-August.
I gotta see it getting done.
Yeah, right.
That's another leverage that.
You said it could be used for a planning project. Um, would that be like road repair planning? Could be.
Road uh road.
Like beta upgrade.
Right.
That we're gonna talk about later.
And where it needs, so because it's CDBG, it would have to be in an area that qualifies. Meaning it income qualifies. So we would have to show that for whatever area you are looking at, whether it was a road, whether it was a neighborhood, whether it was.
A townwide project.
A town, a a townwide, well, well, I have to show that whatever that service area. Is at least fifty one percent lower moderate income.
Oh, okay, yep.
And those numbers change all the time, so I would. Depending on where where you're thinking, um.
Or just looking at a townwide road evaluation.
Yeah, um, there may be, maybe CDBG is not the best. Um, but there may be some other other opportunities. Maybe not townwide, but um, I would encourage you to, well, I can, I can talk to our transportation people.
Would appreciate.
And you said road inventory?
Yes.
Or is it like make that up in my head, road condition, thank you.
All of the road management.
And and some of those. Some of the outcomes of the, of that certainly would be. Have a strong argument to make the tip. At some point, so.
Um, and do you have someone who's actively participating um in those meetings? MPO, MPO meetings?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
You have some?
We have a designee from the town to death probably.
Okay. They're all.
Been a while since we had one on the tip.
I I get it.
Like a decade or more.
I would encourage you to have someone on those meetings. There, Zoom. You can attend in your slippers. Or barefoot, or barefoot.
But back to CDVG.
But back to CDVG, so um.
Any further questions from board?
Do you need a? Direction from us at some point, obviously, what we do with that other money, is there a timeframe?
Um, the sooner the better.
Tomorrow? Friday?
That's really soon, um.
Just curious how we have, our meetings are every other week now, so there's.
Yeah, if you want to, um, what I can do is, I can send, is it best to send it? To you, I'll I'll tell you what I'm sending before I look at you and make you answer, uh. Send some more information on eligible projects. Um, so you can get a better, better idea of of what, yeah, with the with Black Grant. Yeah, absolutely, I can send that over.
At first blush, this makes the most sense, but there may be some carrot.
Mm-hmm.
In there to shave a piece off.
Absolutely, um, and I think we have, we have. Had, we've done this before with with some success in, I'm thinking, the senior center van is something. That we purchased, I guess that was quite a few years. Extra, with extra Black Grant funds.
And the food pantry van also was one of those.
Food pantry, that was, that was something that was purchased with CDBG funds. Um, I think there was. I don't know, that's the first thing that comes to mind. There's, there's some other things too, some some extra work here and there, so. Um, there are, there are other options. And I'm sure Sally, Sally would still take more money.
I'm, I I know. I know. Um, any other questions?
I'm good.
Thoughts? Um, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of or against this proposed? Amendment to move some money. To eligible projects.
And if that's helpful. I, we can always come back and talk about Black Grants, because they're my favorite thing.
And you were looking at Nadine, you were gonna send Nadine that info, correct?
Yes, okay, did I call you? No, okay, yes, okay, good, I wrote Nadine, but okay, I'm sorry.
We do all day, don't worry about it.
I'm sure, I'm sure it goes both. Sorry.
All right, so. Motion to close the hearing if there's no further discussion.
Second.
Roll call vote, Dan Gali.
Doug Morgan, yes, Russell Anderson, yes.
Okay. And then I guess from that discussion, um, we will not make a motion right now to. amend that to Northlake pending review of what other eligible projects might. Ticket.
Absolutely, and then we'll definitely come back.
And and we'll discuss it at our next meeting, which will be two weeks from now.
Wonderful, thanks so much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you too.
Thanks, everyone who listened.
Maybe the next time you can use the new elevator. You know, we we talked about having, having, I mean, the first person to walk across.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take that.
You don't want me?
Oh, I'm not gonna take that away from anybody. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
You want these chairs left here or pushed back?
Right there, right there.
Take care.
Thank you, folks, have a good one.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay. Then moving on to appointments, um, for the record, Kathleen Fishbach was appointed to the Board of Library Trustees. At our last meeting for a term of seven eighteen twenty five, and we were indefinite on the term. It is actually to five nineteen twenty six, end of the next annual town meeting. Um, there's a, an adjustment for the meeting minutes, because it's supposed to be. So I don't know, that's what that was for. Okay, and then the Master Plan Implementation Committee, Student Representative. Josh Raymond, you wanna come up? And just a refresher on this, the select board approved a student member on six thirty twenty five. The planning board approved it there, meeting on seven twenty two twenty five, a student member, non-voting member. Um, and as I mentioned a few weeks ago, back in March or April, the school district school committee liaison had. Reached out at their meetings for a candidate, um. I did not recruit this candidate, I do know this candidate, he is a relative of a relative. If you think that makes a difference, I will abstain from any discussion or. Vote on this.
That was not some thing, that was my fault. I have no objection, the timing was bad, no objection.
Um, so, okay for me to participate? Okay, there you go. That, Mr. Raymond, um, as you know, I think you may have been at one of the meetings that. Um, Pam Slavon was at discussing the student role.
Yeah.
Um, and you came forward, you wanna tell us a little bit about yourself? We got your letter, but speak it out for us.
Um, so I've been a resident of Southwick pretty much my entire life, besides one year. Um, I am in the Southwick Regional School, I'm going into my senior year, I've served on so many clubs, it's. Tiring, but um, I've been on student council, sad, I'm on the school committee, I'm gonna be the senior representative. I just finished the junior year as it, um. On, I'm principal advisory club, I've served with. The district attorney's office before on the youth advisory board, I've done a ton of different things, um. I think. My greatest like attribute to this thing is just the connection to the school, obviously, because. It's something that's kind of untapped right now and I'm a student who has the connections that. Talks to everyone basically on a daily basis, so. Um, anything that the board would need, I would be able to do within. And also bringing students, which is desperately needed, I think.
We usually ask what kind of clubs or volunteerism have you participated in, but you covered that, um, questions?
What intrigues you about the master plan that you'd wanna be on this implementation committee?
The future, I just. I think I look at my grade, I look at the students in the school and. We see what is going on in the town, we see. Everything and I think that. Students just need a voice, our age group needs a voice, and it's just something that hasn't been done before. Um, to this extent at least that I know of, um. So I think advocating for the students and my age group is really what draws me to this.
Do you think you might get them to come sit in the front row here sometime and give some public comment, their ideas?
It depends on the issue. I mean, it, our age group, it has to, has to matter or connect personally for us to actually care. Um, I see, I take it that the rest of the town is the same way, because people usually leave after their issue goes up, so.
Sure.
I mean, it's definitely something that we can work towards, but um. We have to get people excited about this stuff.
How how does the position work? Well, so you're, you're graduating next year. What happens at that point? Does someone else come in and fill that position? Does he stay on?
May apply for it, it's an annual appointment, we're all annual on it. Theoretically, he could apply as a regular member after that. Um, depending on what his plans are, if he would be here, um, or we would. Go back to the school and see if they had someone else who might be interested and.
Okay.
Again, bring a fresh class then of.
Right, right, so it's a seat at the school, basically.
Yep, yep, and and the purpose for us, hoping to have that position, I'm speaking as the MPIC member, um. Was to hear from another constituency, another age group. Without us trying to imagine what it is, how they view certain things that are happening. And put him on some tasks with a bunch of different organizations to hear what's going on and relay it. And then come back with what the younger people's view of those twenty forty plans are. Not to speak for you, but.
I think, um, in terms of like the future, it is probably smartest to look at the. Two individuals, the junior and senior school committee representatives, because they're gonna be the people that are. Socially and student government wise intertwined with the school best, so. I mean, those usually are the people that have the connections that you would need and. Yeah.
Any questions?
You know, I have a question now for after.
Okay.
Because that was very thought provoking, but, um. What are, what are, what are your academic pursuits? What are you, what's your favorite area of study?
Honestly, it's all kind of even for me, um. I have had more fun classes, I had like, um. Film, film study and, um.
I don't even need to write that one down, yeah, exactly.
Um. Yeah, on, I like English mainly, I think, but. It varies, every year is different, it depends on the teacher.
Sure.
And you're not opposed to receiving assignments to liaise with other parties and collect data for them or whatever it is. Would we think they might ask us to do? We're all going to be in the same boat of now assisting other parties for the most part. You're ready for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
You have a motion?
If you are so inclined.
I'll make a motion to appoint, um. Cashier, Roger, Ryan, Raymond. Position, second.
Roll call vote, Dan Gali.
Doug Morgan, yes, Ross Anderson, yes.
Thank you. Hope you know what you're in for.
Great, thank you.
Now the work starts.
Thank you so much, Jeff. And you're welcome to stay if you like, or not, feel free, feel free not to. All right, and then.
Wheels of government turn here.
Our next uh appointment is Ronald Lawren, interim building inspector from Southampton. Um, we did appoint Robert Sullivan in mid-June as our interim building inspector. Um, and this is to appoint a second one to cover while Mr. Sullivan is unavailable for vacations or other planned. Or out of service periods.
My only question was, um.
We got a resume today.
Um, is he familiar with Tim and Bob, he permitting, is that message, keep moving?
Yeah, he's, um. Working on getting a login for the permits here, so you can. Permanize, that was called permanize, just getting a login here, so that he can do that. I don't think Mr. Sullivan does that.
I didn't think, yeah.
Oh, yeah, but that's okay.
So you can even do it remotely, maybe?
He can. Okay, we met with him on Friday, he came in to talk about drop off, because it may be the same cost structure. So, so, a backup. Um, the only thing he asked was that, um. The work kind of be stacked, if it could be coming a distance, so stacking on a day or two each week, so that. Kind of minimize the number of trips, that's it.
And how long would this be? In indefinite?
He would, yeah, as well.
Uh, yes.
Indefinite.
Yeah.
Okay.
Specifically for the next two weeks, but. But, um, yes, he goes down.
Two weeks plus, okay. Two weeks plus, okay.
Need a motion?
Yes.
So move. Second.
Roll call vote, Diane Gale, aye?
Doug Morgan, yes. Ross Anderson, yes.
All right, and then into new business, acknowledge and approve a ten thousand dollar donation into library gift account from the Wolf family for the outdoor community space project with gratitude for this very generous contribution.
So move.
Well, you wanna?
We need to vote on it.
Yeah, we do, but you wanna wanna do each one?
You could just read them and do a multiple.
And and then just do one at the end. Also to approve twenty dollar donation to the library gift account from Nancy and Chris Collins in memory of Alberta Hayden. A two hundred dollar donation into the Southwick Police Department gift account from Rachel Fry. A eleven hundred twenty one dollar donation to the Southwick Animal Control Medical Gift Account and Southwick Animal Control Gift Account from IBS in the amount of one hundred and twenty one dollars and American Legion Post three thirty eight for one thousand dollars. Two hundred dollar donation should be posited into the Southwick Fire Department gift account from Rosemond Campbell. Motion to accept those donations as read?
Second.
Roll call vote, Diane Gale, aye?
Doug Morgan, yes. Ross Anderson, yes.
Right, and then the library would like to surplus a bookshelf on page sixteen in your packet.
Make a motion circles.
Very handy bookshelf.
Has it gone out to be repurposed at all through the town, do we know?
I think that's what she's giving it up for, and then we would put it on our surplus list and cycle it through.
I mean, typically, stuff like this, Steve would grab it and throw it downstairs and if anybody wanted it, you know, with our furniture. It's not, it's not a major item. You know, she could advertise it through the town and just store it downstairs. As time comes, someone might need it. We have all kinds of shelving and cabinets and everything else on it.
Chairs, tables, poker tables.
Did we have a access?
We did. We did. We were throwing it out. Anybody needed any of this, and some stuff would go, but it's kinda depends on the cycle.
What about the auction with the vehicles?
It could be put on that. I mean, it's kinda minor.
Is there a date for that? Auction?
Looked at I saw.
So we can vote to surplus it and allow Nicole to dispose of it, however. Second, second, you did it. Roll call vote, Diane Gale, aye?
Doug Morgan, yes. Ross Anderson, yes.
All right, and then discuss and vote on the Wally Computer Associates contract for fiscal twenty six. You wanna say something?
Yeah, I'm going to step away from the select board while you guys discuss this issue as I
Well, okay. If you so choose. I didn't think you needed to, but
I know, absolutely.
All right. So this is to review it and vote to have Nicole Parker sign the agreement. The good news is it hasn't gone up since at least twenty twenty two. It remains at ninety one thousand four seventy six annually.
Well, I had, I mean, I know Nicole couldn't be here. I had a couple of questions in regard to it says it has dual licensing, dual access license, which I believe was a security type of thing, unless it's a different product. No, we had trust of five. So it seemed like there was some overlapping, and then we have antivirus. So there seemed like there was some overlapping things that I'm not sure, need explanation, that probably
So I have DRO and testify. DRO lets you log into your computer.
Right, through the remote number code.
And then trust of five is just in females.
Right.
Do serve different.
And then there's sign on anti signet antivirus network security. So, yeah, that maybe that's just for servers or something. That's why I'm sure there's an answer.
Yeah.
I just don't know what it is.
Do you want to wait and ask those questions before you you sign off on it? To make sure.
Can we? I don't know how soon.
Uh, it has not the expiration on the last one was through June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. So we've been operating month to month on trust.
And I and I know, I believe Nicole had meetings with them.
Yes, she did.
My question would be historically, two years ago, the the response times weren't relative to what the charts said. So if you were a department head, single person, single user having an issue, we always had a question. We put submit a ticket, and for whatever reason, they may respond after a five o'clock hour or not till the next day. And sometimes in the department head, you're trying to get forms out, stuff now. So I just wonder if she had that discussion with performance parameters. And it was listed here.
Yeah. They have, I don't find the page it's on, but there is a commitment schedule, I think.
Page nineteen, major incident, critical incident, urgent incident.
Nineteen, I was just getting there.
So I mean, like urgent incident issued impacts one user on a computer within a single customer has impacted overall functions, urgent automated acknowledgement upon generation of sixty minute response time. And I know that that metric was not being met two years ago. Maybe it's improved. That's just my question.
Would you wanna propose some chargeback if it's not met?
It gets pretty deep into the weeds.
It does.
The contract.
It does.
I would just say perform the contract that they're providing, and you know, that's it's a contract, so. But I know, and I heard it from numerous departments, that they're very frustrated.
I did hear that as well. And I know, I know Nicole was very as frustrated. I was actually sitting across from her desk one day when she was on the phone with them voicing that frustration.
I mean, it may have been addressed, and it's fine.
It's up to you. We have been operating, like I said, monthly anyway. It's not like it's critical. We haven't come up on a deadline. The signature page needs a correction anyway, so she can't sign it right now anyway. It says tis very not Southwick. So if you wanna ask those questions first, and we'll address it.
I mean, I'm comfortable authorizing her to sign it with with that correction we said, but I would just make the note that we expect contract parameters to be followed, or it's in violation of the contract. I mean, there's a lot of good in it.
Yeah, like I said.
It's very frustrating when you're trying to finish something, a deadline, and it's always been something that.
Yes, of course. All right, Sid, do you wanna make that motion?
I'll make a motion to put the contract with highlights.
With the correction to the last, the signature page? And to have Nicole Parker sign it.
And that will come, yes.
Second, roll call vote, Diane Gale, aye? There you go.
I'll abstain.
Welcome back, Doug.
Good to see you.
All right. Water and sewer abatement for five eighty seven College Highway. We are approving the sewer portion of two seventy five ninety seven, which is on the very last page of all of that, the calculation. On page forty five, if you're looking for that. The page number of your entire packet, so not of that application.
Two seventy five ninety seven?
Correct.
So, second.
Roll call vote, Diane Gale, aye?
Doug Morgan, yes. Ross Anderson, yes.
Okay, then in your packet on page forty six, we had an elderly rate application. There's no action on that. That was sent to us in error. The the water department hasn't even seen that. I did speak to Beryl today, however, about the this application form, if you take a look at it. It says if you are charged, if you are in town sewers, you will continue to be billed a minimum sewer rate. We now have a discrepancy. We now have have a different policy for water and sewer, because their form currently says that. The sewer form for an elderly adjustment, it isn't a rate adjustment. It is an exemption from the minimum charge. That is the sewer side. So they're gonna meet eight twenty one and see if they wanna rework that into a common form or we will just carry on with two different forms. One will be for this. It'll have to make the resident apply onto pieces of paper. But they'll come back with that.
And they should just strike that sentence.
Yes. Yes. And then any other new business from anyone?
I don't know if this would be new business or old business. I just wanted to make a point on some business that over the last couple of weeks, hats off to the DPW. Steve, the cemetery, all working together. I don't know if you saw, but they got the parking into the pickleball court. So that was a combination of DPW coming down, helping out, pouring it, rolling, rolling it out with their rollers, Scott, I believe it was Scott, yourself. They also help get the base at the for the shed down the cemetery. Just it's refreshing to see departments working together and sharing equipment. You borrowed a dump truck. So it's, I just wanted to make comment to them. Hats off. It's good to see you heading that direction.
Excellent.
Next team effort.
But that's all. None for me today.
Eddie?
We have a main person in the planning conservation room. Her name is Renee Houdon. She's report secretary there. We have a new person can count on aging who took Denise McGarry's place in the dining room. And we have a new assistant animal control officer. Sydney Kelsey and then Juliana Volodya Chinko, probably murdering.
Well.
Juliana. So they all started within the last week.
Excellent. Excellent. That's good news. Okay. Under old business, authorize chief administrative officer to sign the municipal aggregation. We believe the last discussion on this was just a discussion that everything had been approved. All approvals were tendered, and we were waiting for the best available rates to lock in, and we may or may not have designated Nicole to sign it. So this is what we're doing today. Is to allow her to choose that. She couldn't find the record of it.
Vote to reaffirm our previous authorization.
There you go. Second.
Second.
Roll call vote, Diane Gale, aye?
Doug Morgan, yes. Ross Anderson.
All right. Goals and objectives. I saw Doug had updated some notes. Did you go into that file and add yours?
Go do that.
And I think how we wanna tackle that is schedule a work session to do that. So we'll wait for Nicole to come back and do that, if you can, don't, if you All right. And then discuss the paint stewardship. Proclamation again. Did y'all have a chance to take a look at that? Any further questions for Dr. Irwin? No?
No.
All right, so we wanna adopt such resolution and go on the list of cities and towns and support.
I wanna I wanted to say that I think that this is the right way to approach this. Being voluntary or? On a couple of fronts. One, that it's voluntary. Two, that it's on a statewide basis. I think when the when an individual city or town tries to go it alone on these types of things, it puts themselves at a disadvantage or a or a competitive situation with neighbor communities. If this is adopted, it would have to be on a statewide basis, and therefore keeps all businesses that choose to participate in this or even not participate in this, makes it voluntary, and it keeps them competitive vis a vis their neighbors. You know, I know we've had other things in front of us on on a local basis. And you know, there was a lot of back and forth from business owners, from residents, from everyone, and from the from the government as to the merits there thereon, but this at least keeps it on a a level, keeps the level playing field across the state. And I know, I think they have something like this in Connecticut today, correct? So we're practically surrounded, but so from from that point of view, you know, from a personal point of view, I think it's a good idea, I mean, to be able to recover this material and reuse it. You know, and but it it's still voluntary for businesses that want to undertake it and view it as a competitive advantage, and those that don't wanna do it, because they view that as a competitive advantage, that's fine. So I would be you know, if a motion was made and seconded on the board, I would probably vote in favor to to recommend that we sign on to the legislation.
I did ask what direct impact it would have on our operations. And Dr. Irwin did explain that they would provide totes, very large totes for the containers. Limited to one gallon or smaller.
Five gallons or one gallons or four size.
And
What is like a fifty gallon overpack drum type of thing or?
It's a tote, and it's four foot by three. Basically, if it's on a pallet. And typically, if you're only putting one gallon cans, it accepts only between one hundred and fifty and two hundred gallons.
So needs a pallet space or two or three, depending on what sizes we would allocate to it. And then a day, is that how they generally do it? A day or a few times a month have a paint return day? And then our people would have to direct it over there to that.
Retail, it's every day, if it's a transfer station, you follow shots. If you wanna do it once a month, it's fine. If you wanna do it once a week, that's fine, however you wish to.
If we adopted it for our own transfer station.
And who picks it up?
Whenever your tote gets full, you just call paint, or they'll come give you an empty table the way, probably within two to three business days.
All right, so our transfer station would call that number. Once we're full, they come pick it up, whether it's one tote, three totes a month or whatever it is.
As long as you got one tote, they're done.
And from, in my opinion, I'd much rather see the paint retailers in our community do this, rather than have the town, because I don't think we have the correct we would, you know, we don't have a shelter for the paint. I don't know that I'd wanna have the paint, especially oil based paints outside, even in a tote. And we'd have to set up an area for it like we have for the oil deposit place today. And then you've got the issue of picking up pallets at the transfer station. We have containers that we have equipment to move, but I personally, my opinion.
You're spelling close to.
Yeah, I mean, there's all kinds of questions. I would much rather see this done, and you know, not to pick on anyone, but we have two retailers, at least two that sell significant amounts of paint in town. I would, and they have a warehouse space that they could keep this. And you know, the model would be almost, you know, have them take the paint back. And and they have the room, I believe they would have the room for a pallet position for this type of thing, before the town got involved in it.
And you may also be pleased to know that, you know, if let's say that both of your retailers don't want it, and you decide, oh, and we want our transfer station to do it, act like I'm just saying, but Russell can so on. Call up a paint here and say, can you arrange a date? Come and get this stuff. Bring your tractor trailer, they put it all out, people can buy it, and just like, also, yeah, it's a waste, they will go in and they're like, next piece. And they'll just take it all at a day, go away. Generally, they can do that up to twice a year, and at no cost.
I mean, I guess it would encourage people not to hide it in their trash cans. I mean, I guess it would encourage people not to hide it in their trash cans.
You gotta make it easy enough for people to do it, you know.
A number of people are happy to go across the border and feel to the Sherwin-Williams, they're dropping off their paint, sixty percent of their paint, I believe, is from Best Foods Road.
Okay, so. Motion to adopt this resolution?
Some of.
Second.
Well, I'll go up Diane Gale, I?
Doug Morgan, yes.
Okay, we will get you a signed.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming back in yet again. All right, old business. Roads. The beta proposal, we'll talk about that first.
So you, you got the new one, right, that I sent?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
When I, when I talked to the gentleman. Sort of remember the old proposal, but then looks like it was almost ten years ago that that information had come through. So technologies change, some of the whole systems have changed.
Right.
There's two options based on the sensing technology. And he, I mean, he's willing to come in and do a presentation if we needed it to. Whether that was at a meeting or a work session or something. But he, they could go through helping assign applications to. Different scales of road importance or and or. Degregation, you know, however you wanna do it. And because they could take it right through and helping you into the positioning, bonding and everything else to accomplish whatever you want to accomplish. It was pretty much a soup to nuts. Lot more than the first thing we looked at was just throwing the iPhone on your truck and get.
Right, they said they needed three or four years of data to be added to what they had in here someplace.
Yeah, so I'm not sure what they had, because some of it was.
Right, I was talking, John is on and I was talking about this today, that. It's, it sounds like at the beginning, we were updating as we completed work. But as time goes on, we get busy and, and don't give it the intention, so there's some catch up to do. But I still think there's a lot of advantage.
Mike.
To using what we've got in there.
And my question on too is if, if he's using GIS of ten years ago, GIS. Of now shape files and everything else, it's just automatically load and overwrite itself, does, I don't know enough of those technical questions, but. They sure seem to have their act together on it, I know that City Westfield uses them, a lot of, lot of us, a lot of different towns are using them for different levels.
Did they give us any references on that?
I don't think, I'm sure I could get them. He did say, so I said, what kind of timeframe are we talking about? He thought that if decisions were made in the near future, whatever that may be. That they would, could have a report ready for Thanksgiving time, so it'd be kind of pre-budget season.
Of current condition.
Of current conditions, applications.
They're giving them set twelve months to come up with the prioritization.
He said he, I'm not sure about that, cause he said he would, he would have a thing for Thanksgiving to have a roadmap to, no pound intended to.
Right, that's, right, that's the task.
And maybe worth a meeting on it too.
Yeah.
Whether it's that's us, John, select the person, whatever.
And then, of course, I'm gonna look at any others. Or are we required, or can we just upgrade what we currently have?
I would take a look, I mean. I, I had met with a year and a half, two years ago, I met with, I think the name of the company was Beatrice. Very similar to what's here, but I wouldn't hesitate to have someone else come in. Whether it's them or someone else, I know you would go into a webinar from another company as well, have them present to the. Either to, you know, you or me or, or, or to, and, and Nepal as the design, you know, as the C O. And then have a recommendation back, and, and no included DPW of course, right? And have them make a recommendation to the, to this board, what they think would be the best solution for the town.
I mean, if their GIS files that we got, if we get, that we got.
You're gonna get that.
Another company may be able to just take those and read those.
Yeah, and, and a lot of nowadays, the way they. I mean, between Google Maps and all the other publicly available map data, they're gonna give you. I'm not an expert on this, but I think they're gonna deliver a similar product, right? And you know, the other guy, the Beatrice guy, they were focused a lot on. Road inside of road condition as well, the signage and what signs are where and what's your sign inventory, but. It was also the iPhone type of thing, these guys had a LiDAR based solution as well, if I recall from that. I just worth it to get someone else, get another set of eyes on it and another opinion on why someone else would think their products. Good, better, worse than something like this and get a second.
I know the first one I got did not, I asked him about, well, alright, we got the information, now what do we do with it, do you have consultants that help us pick and choose what goes where? And he said he had to do some research on that, so it seemed a little.
These guys are doing this, these guys do this.
And Massachusetts.
Yeah, yeah.
Under the, the bidding process, he would said you could. Typical communities take them under pros, for professional services, so it doesn't necessarily require a bidding. I guess that's one category you can. You don't necessarily.
For them to actually be hands on and.
Right.
Advising.
There was, this is a, to buy this service is a professional service, so you don't, maybe, and Nicole's.
Right, I mentioned, she's a checker.
Yeah, she's the procurement professional, but you probably can procure this under a professional service without having to do an RFP. And going out to bid, if you, if this is the one that you wanna use. Based on your, you, your estimate, and then, but then if you wanna wrap it into. Where they become kind of the general contractor, master contractor for future projects and become an advisor or consultant to the town. That probably has to have, that probably has different set of prepared rules.
Okay, I thought that's what Task Four was, was to kind of train us.
Correct, but they also, they guys, some of these guys also offer a service where they become your road consultant. And you know, they'll help you prepare the bid packages and all the other stuff for the roads, we done. And previously, we've done that all internally because we had that resource.
Yep, yep.
We'll have to see how that all winds up.
John, are you still awake? At your desk? Uh, did you?
This is a stirring discussion and I'm supposed to fall asleep?
We can back to pre-existing non-conforming and take.
Yeah.
I know, it was a strong kickoff.
I don't, did you have an opportunity to see if, if you could tell how old the data was that was in there?
Oh, yeah, yes, I, I think I have that right here. Yeah, I think that was. Bear me for one second here. I think that goes back to the late teens at its most recent update.
Buddy said two thousand and ten was the.
That would be. It's possible, dude, you guys had to break it down and see if these are comprehensive updates or minor edits. Anyway, it'll be some, we'll, we'll call him, effort to do our best effort.
It's a bit stale.
That's right, at least get the information in there, let it, I'm gonna call it age through that. That prior programs process, so it shows at least that level of. Plan deterioration, but not an impossible task to reconstruct that.
Okay.
Two thousand and fourteen.
Thanks, Russ.
Beta says?
Yeah, Beta says the town initially retained Beta to develop its pavement management program in two thousand and fourteen. Since that time, Beta has provided periodic assistance.
So initiated at twenty fourteen and maybe stopped updating twenty nineteen, okay. So about halfway through it's.
Most of the roads haven't gotten any better.
Not a lot of miles done.
We haven't installed those self-preparing roads yet.
He has seventy-five centerline miles, and I thought we had ninety-one, but it might be.
But this would be the public roads, not private.
Fifty-sevens.
Yeah.
And also some of the. Unapproved road miles, yeah.
Would they count the date? Two oh two?
You probably have to do whatever you want, but they're gonna charge.
What have we got, like eighty-four, eighty-five miles?
Ninety, yeah, ninety-one.
Okay.
Total road miles.
But there's still, even, so, so we go through all of this, this still doesn't tell us what's underneath the road, which is.
They can actually draw some pretty detailed conclusions from some of the road conditions to what. And then you're gonna have to do some additional work, you're right.
Right, and it's just not gonna say this.
It's not the answer all to everything, but probably eighty, ninety.
Right, so. So I guess we will.
Like, and Nepal discussion was to.
Yeah.
We'll get to the prices.
Yeah.
I think she sent us a list of possibilities.
There were three on her initial list.
I sent you that thing, right? I'll make sure I'm spelling it right.
So we'll get through your more.
At least.
More proposals to compare, get, get at least a, a price gauge and scope. And it isn't going to help us in our decisions on what to do with the roads to bed.
Well, we're trying to. Get for the other monies. Those have already been planned, right, Loomis streets.
Well, we still have to give them some direction on what to work on.
Well, I think that, that some of the projects are set to go, just to be clear, I don't want them waiting in the wings on. South Loomis, that was already, that fuse was already lit three years ago, they probably are, have awarded that, I thought.
And then just open the bids room, yeah.
Gargon, right, that was a three-year project, year three is to pave the road, so we should follow through.
South Loomis isn't even on the list.
Cause it was funded with last year's money, that's what I mean, we should continue down those. And then for, you know, out of this year's money. Uh, you know, my personal recommendation is, you know. The three-year projects finished, you know, continue on that, whether it was at Holcombe, Gargon. And then we had also talked about, and I think we actually took a vote on the, the drainage issue on awful Woodside Circle there at South Long Yard. There was a sense of urgency around that, and the rest, we'll just, you know, we can.
Well, that, that was a question I had for Nicole, but she wasn't here today, was on the South Long Yard, yes, we have discussed it and said, yes, it's a, a critical nature, but. Is someone given the go button to do something?
I thought we took that vote, and you know, Mr. Goddard, you know, the estimate we have is, is strictly that, we're not gonna hold. Mr. Goddard to that dollar amount, that's gonna solve all the problems, but. They gotta get in there and they gotta do something to mitigate it from getting much worse. Before they even, you know, start really thinking about making it a lot better.
I'm just saying, our discussion was, yeah, it's critical. But I, John, did you feel like you got an order to move ahead on it?
I, I left, let me answer that just slightly differently. I've got some, we'll call it next steps to proceed with regardless of the select board's. Decision to go ahead and, but I think the inclination was sure it was gonna be a priority project, whether or not I interpreted that as. Authorization to proceed, or if we're waiting to just settle out the rest of this, that's okay, you know, my next step frankly is to. Meet with the contractor onsite, so we can talk, talk about the practicality of some solutions. And I believe Conservation has invited me to attend their meeting next Monday on the topic, but nonetheless.
Alright, so you're doing stuff to move it forward.
That's right, just to try to refine our approach to this, I mean, we all have an ideal, I just wanna make sure I can. Make the numbers work for that. If, if I may offer a one comment on the, we'll call it the, the improvement list. That we're reviewing. I appreciate the thoughts related to Ed Holcombe Road. And Gargon Terrace moving forward with those planned projects that are now in, you know, advancing phases. If the select board feels so inclined as to release. The funds for crack sealing out there. You know, pavement level work, that's something, although I think, well, for those particular projects we just discussed. That's likely gonna spill into two thousand and twenty-six at this point, but cracks and there's oftentimes. Opportunities to bring in those types of rehabilitation and preservation projects in before weather turns on us. I know it's not an insignificant amount of money sitting right there, but if there's any confidence to move forward with that, I could begin to set. Up work and discuss that with contractors. So.
I would, that's usually something moving forward, there was eighty thousand dollars on this, on the sheet. So if you're looking for a motion. At the chair for, to allocate eighty thousand dollars towards crack sealing for this season, I would make that motion.
Second, you already bid it, right, so you have all your numbers. Right, John?
I know I have both numbers, the specific locations is something I need to, I'm sorry, I'm not equipped to answer with that detail on the fly, Russ. I apologize.
But that's not, if we approve it, it's not gonna hold you back, you're gonna get that in, information to move forward.
No, that's what he wants to discover.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right, I know that, thank you, sorry.
So that was the second roll call vote, Diane Gale, I?
Doug Morgan, yes.
Ross Anderson, yes.
And you wanna take a couple other piecemeal ones while we were.
And then, well, I think Russ had some questions last week that John was listening to and he talked to Randy, so you wanna fill him in on what you have? Learned?
Sure, you know, I suppose the, the first piece, the, the second half of that discussion, you know, understanding that if we choose to execute. An agreement. And get some finer textured data to help us prioritize. And hopefully improve our overall, you know, street conditions out here, you know, that's not going to affect. The new projects and the timing of them, so if that takes a, a little while for us to come up with those answers, where to allocate. Those funds, that's understood. And the other piece essentially boiling down to, you know, making sure we could proceed with those preservation efforts. The other, I guess, half of the discussion related to differences in. The projected costs that we see per foot or per road mile. And I think most of you referred to. The fact that it likely was related to different processes slated for different streets. And infrastructure, right, whether or not drainage was acceptable to be in place for another thirty years. Or if it was part of the overall rehabilitation project. Now, the big picture is that if we're doing a micro ceiling project, and a road qualifies for it, it's money well spent in the long run. You know, understanding that you can get. You can preserve a road for a greater period of time, whether it's fifteen or twenty years, you know, at a fraction of the cost of. Going in for, let's just say qualified for a mill and overlay, that gets you about the same period of time. So there's a, there's an average lifespan to each of these efforts. Whether it's a preservation related element, a rehabilitation element like a mill and overlay, or those full depth. You know, reclamation or cold in place efforts that we're planning to use on some streets. It's a little tough to break down, we're gonna call it live, but if you have specific questions, I can. Either answer that in an email, or we can try to hit it right now. From our projected figures.
I mean, I, I know enough to be dangerous, as you know. My thought was that we stayed on track. For what you, with Randy yourself, and you know, kinda what you'd been planning, and then this, this road management. Opinion would give us some forecast going into the next budget, twenty-seven budget. How to best, best spend our money, bond, whatever we might need to do. I didn't, in my own mind, I didn't think we would be repurposing what you've already planned, maybe there's. The only question is the chapter ninety money, we didn't know we had yet, that might give us some other chance to do something, I don't know, but. My thought was that educating us on what we got, taking an assessment, would be more of a future picture than a current picture. I don't know how Doug and Diane. Doug and Diane, if they interpret the same.
I, I don't think the, the beta or whatever other analysis program we use is going to. Change what we need to do the.
Correct. I agree.
This period.
Right.
It'll help if. The future person figure out what to do next.
Correct.
Better, best, um. But I mean, Doug had kind of rejiggered some things, how did you feel about that? Um.
Well, you know, everyone I talked to.
I know you're talking about where's the high traffic areas or.
And I, you know, and talked to other, talking to the beta gentleman, he said, you know, that's a big portion of what they do is based on traffic counts. So. I mean, if there's, if we have a little wiggle room, it might be based on traffic counts, but I don't know. If we have that data yet. Um. I understand we can get that data without a lot of heavy lifting. Through a contractor, but, um.
But I, I think we pro. To me, I would say we follow Randy's recommendations. And the process he was on. Until we have that data and that, I noted on beta that the, the traffic collection wasn't part of it, but we can certainly integrate that.
Right.
Into it.
I agree.
For, for better planning in the future, but.
There's some talk that, um. Who was just here?
Eric.
PBPC.
Yeah, there, they have some of that, but not necessarily every road.
Hmm.
So I don't know if there's some overlap that might help us somewhere.
So, um, again, Doug had kind of. Shifted a little bit around from what Randy did, what, what did you, wanna run us through that again real quick, Doug?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a bit of balance, and I also thought, and, a good thing Erica was here tonight, cause it did make me think, like, the. I guess it's close to eight or ten years ago now. The state. Did a major project out on Route fifty-seven from about Hudson Drive. Past the, you know, they came past the schools and, and then, and through the intersection, right, and redid all of that. That made it on the tip, or the, the transportation in. Infrastructure program, right, they have this list that PVPC comes up with, and then they fund certain projects from the tip, you know, and you start looking at. You know, now, if you look at Powder Mill Road. West. To the center. We're coming up on that was a segment of a project, a future project, you know, we're coming up on that. Meeting to be done soon, um, and that is not a mill and overlay project, right, that's a big project, um, and especially with the traffic counts and everything else. Um, through there, but I.
Which is one that was gonna be on grants.
That would be one that would be on a tip, it might be, and they fund certain of those projects through the tip, right? Um, and take their piece, right?
Yeah.
Um, you know, certainly, I had, you know, one of the ones I was gonna offer a motion forward to was the Powder Mill Road Rural Match. You know, Randy was in favor of that, I'm in favor of that, right, but we didn't, we didn't move any of this stuff forward, so that we should probably move that forward, and then I kinda took a little bit of balance, and I do agree, um, Russ, there's. A lot of it is on traffic count, and there are roads in that, you could pick any road in town, then we, we could work on just about any one of them. Um, shorter ones that we've done in the last five. Um, but I think that there's roads in town that. Though they may not have, have ginormous traffic counts, they're extremely important to the fifty, a hundred people that live on those roads that drive on them at least twice a day, coming and going. Um, and we need to pay attention to those as well, um, and especially if we're looking at. If we're looking at. A bonding or some other funding mechanism going into the next five years with data from. Uh, the beta or from someone else to, to give us a good idea on road conditions and what can, you know, what the, the situations are out there, and that, and we're gonna allocate large dollars, I still think. We, we have an opportunity here to, to, to kind of balance, you know, the last couple of years, the board has taken on big projects and big projects only. And we did some micro sealing around some residential areas, but as far as milling and paving, other than Gargon, um, we haven't done one, and I think we really need to kind of balance that out. Um, and hence why when in my, um. Rough calculus here, I think I took. Um, and I still have a ways to go, cause my number is still over the total, um.
Well, you, you said, there's some inconsistencies for.
But.
And. Where footage costs.
Well, I, and you know, and that does make sense, because some of the roads need a lot more work, but I did throw into that chart which you guys all got of, you know, cost per foot, right, and they, I didn't sort it, but I know I saw. You know, four hundred dollars a foot down to eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents a foot, somewhere is.
Real.
I, I don't know, right?
Because like, I, I laid this, it out a little differently on the X Y where I put all of the, it's by street and all of the work, so if there's drainage and.
I know, and, cause there, there's a very rule right there, Rich, Rich had mentioned some of the drainage could possibly be done in-house.
Hmm.
Versus contracted out, which is gonna be a huge difference. You know, on the per foot cost.
Right. But I mean, Granville Road is. It's roadwork plus drainage, so it's a different cost than somebody that's just roadwork and.
Right.
What, what is the depth, um? And on Doug's list, you had the Granville Drainage.
Yeah, I just, I put a notice, is if the state's gonna pave, we gotta get this done, cause there's, there was a small section of drainage that they, the town needs to do, I think it was thirty K, and we need to get that done. Because. I'm, I, we don't wanna be that guy, right, they come in and put the beautiful pavement, and then we soft cut it and open it up and put a bump on our newly paved Granville Road, no thank you. Um, we should.
Is that what you would recommend, John? Do that first, or they may not come for two years?
Well, I'm.
Spend it somewhere else.
Uh, for the modest amount of money, you know, that we have. Planned for that, uh, particular project, I'd say we just do it now, um, I, I honestly don't know. How swiftly the state. Uh, may be able to move forward, uh, regrettably, it has been radio silence on this project for, for too long.
Swift and state are not two words usually in the same sentence, so.
Alright, did, do you have his, do you have Doug's list?
I don't know.
You wanna? Share it so he can see if he, we'll just go through it again, or?
Sure. You'll be able to read this on the screen over there?
Probably.
It's gonna be pretty small.
I know, maybe. And you should, you know, the screen.
Try to make it a little larger here. Now you won't be able to see all of it, but. Too, too big.
Well, if you hide your. Feet and cost columns and you have your last columns with just the values is really what we're focusing on. Cause we're not gonna dissect what's the cost per foot.
So here you go.
So there.
So I took Randy's number, and by the way, I did, it, it's hidden now, but I did take and added. Last year's chapter ninety allocation.
The same amount.
In the same dollar amount to this year, so Randy had about one point two million funded. Cause that's the number he had, one, two, or five. I'm at one eight five three, which is. Got shot close to what the, the total comes out to be. So, when you add in the chapter ninety money. So I took the liberty of spending the allocation of chapter nine, but we didn't actually get.
The one seven nine nine, and you're at the one eight.
Yeah, yeah, I was, I'm at one eight five three.
Yep. But then he has some leftovers that. Plus minus.
Correct.
You're in the same place.
That's, yeah, and I spelled Holcomb wrong, but, so, at Holcomb Road, we're down that road, we're committed to that project, we're out there working on it now, I think.
Correct.
Um, so we need to, can, you know, my estimation is continue down that road. Um. I was concerned about a dollar amount on the. On Fernwood. He didn't have anything, but he had a dollar amount for the total, so I think he had it at, it looks like it was five twenty, so, um. I said, okay, let's put fifty percent of that, you know, fifty percent of that, call that a two-year project. And get into some of that, Gargon was a three-year project, let's finish that project this year and get off of Gargon, the sidewalks are in. The sidewalks were taken out, the trees were cut down, the sidewalks was put in on one side, now we gotta get in there and pave it and be done.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Meadow Lane, I don't know, Meadow Lane's a mess, it needs to get done at some point, um. Powder Mill. Uh, Rural Mash was a no-brainer.
Right.
Um. Vining Hill, a section of Vining Hill or whatever, but we need a better number, um, to go from. The highway up to more vining-ish, cause they were gonna split that out in sections, and we, we didn't really get a lot of quote on that.
We gave us office, no.
I'd like to understand that, and you know, I would probably, you know. We need to, and.
So you think it wouldn't be? Oh, where, where'd you get the two twenty-eight out of that?
I just took twenty percent of the total that he has budgeted for there and figured out, and said, that's my number.
There's your twelve.
Yeah.
So that, and there becomes. The question is, what are you, what are you doing for the two twenty-eight, are you milling overlay, are you chip sealing, are you? What, there's a bunch of different processes we could do, so, who gets that information?
I, and again, I'm just looking at it, and you know, that's. That's a difficult one, cause you know, there's, there's certain sections of Vining Hill that are bad, there's certain sections are good, the number that he has is Vining Hill Road.
Right.
Soup to nut, so I don't really know.
Well, no, he has a Vining Hill College Highway to Pearl Brook.
But it, I think I, we need to go past, I think it, the road is bad, worse, up to, up to, I think it's more vining, at least. But I'd have to write out there again.
I think it changed the digs, Davis has included frequently, changes.
So I don't know how we just come up with a number and say, go apply it to the road.
John, do you, do you have any, um? From the bid process? You know, whether it's, uh. Mill and overlay or the, the different processes, is there? A per foot or per yard, or? Do we have some base, you know, take the drainage out of it, is it, we pick application A, is it X amount a mile, is there some way of figuring this out?
Sure, the. The budget being number that we're using, uh, here. For Mill and Overlay, uh, is sixty-five dollars a linear foot. So as I'm looking at Vining Hill Road, for example. That is planned as a Mill and Overlay project. Um, and the absolute line share, you know, eighty percent of that number. Is, is paving, you know, about twenty percent or. Um, uh, is, boils down to, uh, uh, drainage improvements out there for, for a number of cross culverts.
How much should you say that was a foot?
Sixty-five, is a budget number we, uh, looked at for, for Mill and Overlay.
Thirty-six hundred feet.
You're two fifty, you're two twenty-eight.
I'm just saying, if you just take that, two, if, take two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, and divide it by sixty-five.
Yeah.
Three thousand five hundred and. Seven feet.
I guess we would be asking John to see if that is a viable section of work.
Out of the global closer look, I wanna make sure I, you know, pick a spot where. Uh, we, we don't have, you know, six crossings that we have to resolve. Um.
Hmm.
And that ends up being, if you will, the, the, the end of the two twenty-eight. But. You know, the, it's, that's a meaningful chunk, I'm not gonna sneeze that.
And, and I guess it's the same question with metal, you can pass by Meadow Lane, but you just pick fifty percent of it, can it be done in? Phases, or is it best to do it all at once?
Don't know, I just took the monies I had and figured.
That's what I mean.
A project, they may have to get in there and do some of the drainage work this year that needs to get fixed over there, if there is any, if not. They might come back and go, maybe it's better to, to do it all in one year and we reprioritize, but. You know, obviously, we had a little bit of change in. In some stuff, I've done this, this is how I've done it the last couple of years, and we usually had a discussion back and forth on how to. You know, for some better input too, um. But, you know, continuing down the rest of this, just to get fit, get to the bottom, Granville Road, I thought we just talked about, South Long Yard Drainage, we talked about and voted on already.
Yeah.
Um, the DER grant match was a no-brainer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and but, believe it or not, with just that short discussion, that's one point eight million dollars.
Yeah.
So, and Holcomb Road is, it's half a million bucks of it right there, and we're committed to that.
Yes.
I mean.
Yeah, I, that's, that, that part is our, yes, I agree, it's committed and.
And the big, I, I guess the big.
I mean, my third, this is my third review into this stuff, I'm like, well, how do I, how do I say split that up and come up with a dollar amount? I wanna, I wanna leave it to them to decide. Where best to split? If those are the roads we think were important, I guess I would leave that bucket. To, to John and whoever there to look at tho, those dollars. Can you split that between those three, three routes? Meadow. Vining Hill and. Fernwood.
And so we're having a discussion.
I, I mean, I, I don't. I, that's my question is to John, does it make sense, can you come back to us and tell us that makes sense to split them, or, or take four hundred on one of them and. Whatever it is.
I'd be happy to look into that further and see if I can break it down to meaningful phases.
And we can, we can say yes to the others. That. Are not being split and just move those along then.
Yeah, for once, they're in them.
So that would have been Ed Holcomb. Gargon. Powder Mill Match. The crack ceiling. The Granville Road Drainage. We already did the South Long Yard Drainage, and then the DER Match. Those are, yes. John will review the feasibility of. Fernwood. Meadow Lane. And Vining Hill. Being split.
Yep.
That's our discussion.
Agreed.
And John will come back.
And that, and that was the point of this discussion in, in general, wasn't for me, I'm not certainly gonna tell the, the road guys. You know, what to do, I was looking at allocating monies toward.
Okay.
Projects, and in, in, I think last year. You know, one of the years, I forget, it was last year or the year before that, I was like, okay, I had an opinion on this, and then the board decided Hillside was the thing, so, okay, Hillside got done, and we did no work. Outside of those, that, you know, that was a singular project that was desirous of the, all the money.
Yep.
So we did it.
Alright, do we wanna yes vote on all of those that I read were yes? Short forty-five seconds ago?
Yeah, right.
Do we need to vote on those so they can at least?
Um, I, I, I'd put it for him as, you know. I put those forth as a motion.
Okay. Second, and so roll call vote on those as read as yes, Diane Gale, I.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Ross Anderson, yes.
And we'll hear back from John on the others. And. Hopefully. The next time we meet. And then we can give you the final go-ahead.
No, this, this is great progress, I appreciate everyone's attention.
Alright. Feel slow to me. Okay. Then where are we? That was roads, data, uh. Alright. I just had master plan priorities, I think you all got yours in, and I got all of mine in, I guess I was missing one, sorry. Thought I had sent it like in February.
So did I. So let's blame Norm.
Yeah, yeah.
He's not here to defend himself.
Alright, so then, um, I think he sent back out to all of you also a. A very long recap, or did you get the measurement package?
Hey, that came yesterday.
Yeah. So on this.
That was from.
From Norm. He sent it out to like sixty-eight parties. Um, I'll, I'll boil it down, you can look for it later, I'll boil it down to, what he's explaining is the scorecard. So we got. Um, a report back as a lead organization. Of what our top priorities were. We have to. Discuss this and decide what are the things we're gonna get done in one year, two year, five years, ten years? And lay those out in a projected schedule of what we're gonna get accomplished. And, and our lead. I don't wanna oversimplify, but they're kinda simple, it's to authorize other people to do things. So we need to look at what our top priorities ended up being based on all of our input, we can discuss those. If something seems out of whack. If something seems out of whack, and and as I'm reviewing it, things might seem out of whack to me. Um, did we all interpret that thing the same way? So if you think there's a. Something's really not what we intended, we should discuss that. We can reorder. Our priorities now among us, now that we see these are the top, and then we need to schedule this out so that we can start. If we need to authorize a new subcommittee, do so, that kind of thing. Or or charge Nicole to investigate this or that, you know, to to move that forward, so first, I guess, look at. What the results told us. Does that sit well with you or not? And then we can discuss those and decide what we're going to. Put out in terms of years of accomplishment, and then, of course, we will be measured on such as well. And I don't mean today.
No, I get it. I read some of it yesterday and. The color got me, but um. You know, and I also went back and completed the one activity that Norm. Said he didn't get back for me, so I did it again, I think, but I hope it matches the first time. But I I. The same commentary I had for him on that was the same, definitely the same commentary was that. There was like forty six items in that list. Probably fifteen of them were.
Done.
No, they were duplicates for subtopics of a nut like. Establish a beautification committee. And then plant trees and something, you know, there was like eight things that they all rolled together, you really could have had one. Main thing.
I agree.
And so prioritizing forty six things. And the way that that list was presented to actually try to keep track of forty six things to make sure you didn't have two number sevens. It was challenging it, you know, at times.
I had a lot of things I didn't want to rate there. If I had to vote on them, it would be a no.
Well, I just.
A hard no.
So I basically, if you.
So I have like fourteen. My last fourteen I had to rank. How bad did I think those were?
I did the same thing, and so I worked up from, you know, I said, I read the list and said, yeah, this is horrible, so started with forty six and then worked from, oh, I said, this is great, this is.
All the same.
And then toward the middle, so like the middle of my chart. Reads almost in order, but it just happened.
When you got to twenty, you go, I wish I had forty back.
Well, but I I believe me, I said, I put a note at the end, I said, I would have redone this, except that I didn't want to reorder this list again. I have other things to do.
Right.
You know, that are more pressing on my time right now.
And I feel I feel like we probably have, I don't know how you all treated. Things that were already done.
Some of that was, yeah, there was.
I didn't rank those, number one, they were already done. I didn't want to waste my vote. On. Something that's been done for the next month, so that is where they fall out for us if we all did that differently. So we can discuss that, we can rejigger those, and then we can plot them out.
Sure.
Okay, so that's what those couple of things that you just got. That's all I have for old business. Doug.
One is I met with a Mr. Pelkey. Uh. Last weekend or the weekend before. And spoke to the C O, C O myself. Mr. Goddard. And. Mr. Pelkey are going to meet. To air our grievances and figure out a way forward with another drainage situation over there that looks. I only heard one side, so I want to hear all of it and then. Come back to the board with, and you know, with DPW's. Opinion as to what needs to be done over there, because there was some drainage work done in the road that's impacting.
Where is this one?
Uh, Klaus Sanders.
Oh, okay. I've seen that. That that's, I think. When I sent you pictures, I.
Yeah, we've been back.
Was that close? Okay.
Of course.
Yeah, so I I met Mr. and Mrs. Pelkey out there. We. Got a little tour of what what he says was done, but I really want to hear from the town, what the town did there and. And kind of get to the bottom of that. It was just kind of outreach. It was kind of not. Not dissimilar to the gentleman from South Long Yard that brought that issue to the forefront. And then we have some stuff for executive session, I think, but that's it for me for old business.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to warrants, acknowledged payroll warrant number two, six, oh, two, dated July sixteen, twenty twenty five, in the amount of four, oh, nine, three, nine, four point seven, two. Payable warrant twenty six, oh, one B. Data July eighth, twenty twenty five, in the amount of one hundred sixty five thousand, seven, oh, six and eighty cents. Payable warrant two, six, oh, two B, data July twenty second, twenty twenty five, in the amount of three million. Sixty nine thousand dollars and seventy six dollars fifty four cents. Those are hard to read out. And then we have open session minutes from June twenty third, June thirtieth, and July fourteenth. And one of those, was that the July fourteenth I just amended? That date, yes, it was, because it was our last meeting. So I just amended on the fly July fourteenth for the appointment date. I I'm waiting to see if they read them and approve them.
The minutes?
Yeah.
I've sent them back, all them back with changes.
I'm also.
On that, so. Going to a motion. Roll call vote Diane Gale, I.
Doug Mogan, yes.
Ross Anderson, yes.
All right, then we are going to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapters. C thirty A. Section twenty one, two, and three, and Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, Labor Council Litigation Matters and Strategy for Collective Bargaining with Police Union Coalition, Fire, I A F F, D P W, Non-Union Staff and Clerical Union, U S, U P S E U. Executive Session, re-mass general law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one, two, and three, Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, and Exception two, move to go into executive session. To conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and not to reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And not to convene in open, reconvene in open session. And declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and not to reconvene in open session. Exception three, move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and that the chair moved to go into executive session. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and not to reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, and that the chair declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating. Position of the body and not to reconvene in open session. And read Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, person shall have a right against unreasonable. Substantial or serious interference with their privacy, the Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award damages.
Before we roll into exec session. When is our next meeting? May? Fourteen?
Eight, eleven.
Eleven, August eleven, so. I forgot to plug open farm day that's coming up that following weekend, so let's get everybody have it on their calendar for August seventeen.
August seventeen.
So that's Sunday at ten to four. Guaranteed nice weather this year after last year, they they're do a good one. Courage all, everyone to take part in that, that they put on a great event. And it'll be great to see folks coming out to all the Southwick locations that they're going to have open again this year, so.
And we also went into water restrictions to get today with.
I wasn't going to bring that up in that, but then now we can go into executive session.
With a. Second.
Second.
Roll call vote Diane Gale, I.
Doug Mogan, yes.
Ross Anderson, yes.